Hey, ladies and gentlemen, it is four P M sharp for the city council council work session Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. So I'd like to go ahead and on behalf of the mayor, I'll preside here for a bit. So let's go ahead and get underway. We have a presentation, Ryan, I'd let you introduce that and we'll go forward.
Thank you, council members. So for some time now, both Marion and Cedar Rapids staff have been working towards a long-term capacity agreement for wastewater treatment. Today, we have Lauren O'Neil and Roy Hessman and Dave Wallace from the city of Cedar Rapids. They're here to give you some background on the water pollution control facility as well as proposed improvements. And then we'll go into some of the details of the proposed agreement. So.
Right. Good afternoon, council members. I'm Roy Hessman. I'm the utilities director with the city of Cedar Rapids and.
I'm Lauren O'Neil. I'm the plant manager down at WPC.
So we appreciate this opportunity to visit with you this afternoon. We're just giving you a brief presentation of what has been several, almost a year plus already, Ryan, of work between the Cedar Rapids utility staff and Marion staff trying to pull this agreement together. So first of all, we thought we'd just give a quick PowerPoint and walk through some of that discussion. So just a little brief history of WPC or Water Pollution Control. So in nineteen seventy-two, when the Clean Water Act was approved, there was federal funds to go with the federal act to be able to produce and construct new wastewater treatment facilities. So the leaders at the time got together, talked to joining communities along with the industry that was in the area and decided there was opportunity for federal monies available. We could either pool all of our resources and go after grant funding and basically provide one large treatment facility or all the industry, each of the individual communities would do their own treatment process and everybody would have their own system. So at the time, everyone decided, yeah, it makes good sense. There's a lot of federal money. I believe eighty percent of the facility was built with that federal funding, with the rest of the capacity bought into by the all the contributors that were here at the time. So everything was running smooth. Everything was going good and long come little flood in two thousand and eight. So as you can see, this is the facility. Mother Nature tried to wash it down to the Gulf of Mexico. It didn't quite succeed. But as a result of the damage that was done, we now have a flood control system, our own berm and flood pumping station that protects the facility. That was about a twenty million dollar fund project that was mostly provided through Homeland Security along with with local funds. And then we also were able to take advantage of FEMA funding after this event to a total of about eighty eighty million dollars to renovate a lot of the plant and get us to where we are today.
Okay, so one of the big projects we've been working on here and will be coming up in the near future is the solids handling improvements project. This project includes the replacement of some of our treatment systems with a new, more efficient treatment system that will provide nutrient removal, which is called the AGS treatment. And it will also allow us the ability to add digesters, which will provide a opportunity to recover the biogas that that would produce and then inject that into the distribution system and actually generate revenue off of that gas. So that's just a brief overview. You can see the new project will be on the kind of the east side there in those blue boxes, and it will eliminate some of the existing infrastructure that is nearly forty years old now. So or over forty year old. So.
Thanks.
Yep.
So just a little bit of the timeline, where where we've started, where we're at, where we're going. So we started this project in the design and concept phase in about two thousand and fifteen. We took our time to evaluate different options, go to various different other wastewater facilities and see what they've installed to see what works, what doesn't work. We did a pilot program for over a year with the AGS system that Lauren mentioned. We've been working with our communities. We've been working with the industry to get stakeholder buy-in and make sure they understand what we're doing and then started on the actual design process. So we are currently around sixty percent design. This contract too, that you see toward the bottom is this larger project Lauren just mentioned. So we're looking at bidding that early next year in two thousand and twenty-four. And then the actual construction would start spring of twenty-four, summer of twenty-four.
So today, we're here discussing three different agreements. And so we wanted to detail out the three different agreements that we're looking at today. So right now, we are currently providing treatment of Marion's wastewater through a twenty-eighty treatment agreement. That agreement includes interim capacity charge. So basically Marion is purchasing capacity from Cedar Rapids, and that charge extends until two thousand and twenty-seven. The agreement itself is in effect until December of two thousand and twenty-nine. In addition to those items, the agreement also includes a requirement for a capacity recalculation agreement. Originally, that was scheduled to be done in July of two thousand and twenty-two, but we extended it to this March, and that's what's the council is looking at today. This, the third item that we would be discussing is the future treatment agreement. So while the current agreement is in effect until two thousand and twenty-nine, we're discussing looking at that agreement and changing it up here prior to that two thousand and twenty-nine deadline. So the current agreement includes enough capacity to treat a population equivalent of forty-eight thousand people. Sometimes that gets a little confusing. My background is in engineering, and I'm also a little bit of a nerd when it comes to wastewater. But that one is, when you say population equivalent, it's it's what we view as one person, what one person would provide in in waste and load to the treatment plant. So while you might not have forty-eight thousand people, that would be the equivalent load that we would be treating. The operation and maintenance costs under the current agreement are distributed proportionally using the residential flow. So we take out the industrial flow that we monitor daily, and then everything else is residential. And so then we take the residential flow and the costs from an operation and maintenance perspective, and then distribute that according to that flow. This agreement, as I mentioned before, requires this capacity agreement by July of two thousand and twenty-two, and we amended it to allow us some time till March of two thousand and twenty-three. All right, do you want to talk about this one?
So part of working on this agreement, the city retained HR green to assist us in evaluating what our future wastewater needs are. So over the next twenty years, we came up with a projection population equivalency of sixty-one thousand. We feel very comfortable with that number, and we feel that's that's a rate of growth in Marion right now. And so that's that's what we programmed. And with that number, what we'll see is a proportionate of plant improvement over the next twenty years that will be performed by Cedar Rapids. And then, under the terms of this agreement, Marion's payment will not begin in probably two thousand and twenty-seven, is that safer to say? So right now, it's anticipated that plan improvements won't be completed till two thousand and twenty-six. So when our current capacity interim capacity charge falls off, that's about when the new capacity charge will take effect. So.
Did you want to talk about this? Okay, all right. So we have a couple of projects that are on the horizon that we are considering capacity improvements. And the first one, as Ryan was mentioning, is scheduled to be completed in two thousand and twenty, FY twenty-seven, and is estimated at the two hundred and fifty million dollar mark. We are currently in design of that project. We're close to sixty percent design. I'm sure you've all witnessed the crazy numbers that are coming back with construction, and we have been working very, very hard at value engineering, everything we can to keep that budget at that two hundred and fifty million dollars. So we are, we estimated Marion's capital contribution at twenty-four and a half million. Now that, again, doesn't include interest, you know, any kind of loan financing, things like that. But that's kind of where we see it right now. Again, please remember, we're we're not even to sixty percent design right now. And and you know how the the construction costs are going. So but that is our estimated amount right now. The other project that is on the horizon that we are planning for but have not started design yet is the main lift improvement. So that project is scheduled to be complete in FY twenty, excuse me, FY thirty-four, and is estimated at a hundred and thirty million dollars. So Marion's estimated capital contribution is right around that sixteen million dollar mark.
And I might just add that we have gone through an example of how this looks with Ryan and Kim in the last few weeks, just just to walk them through how those calculations have been derived.
So looking forward, so after this capacity agreement is signed and moved, and we've both both parties have agreed, the next step of the process is really to get that twenty-eighty treatment agreement solidified. We've been working closely with Marion and Hiawatha to come up with a plan that that really works for everybody. So those negotiations will will continue. We've given ourselves a deadline of six months that we're trying to achieve. And then additionally, in that agreement, we would we would continue to meet at at least annually. I see that happening probably more often than annually, but at least annually to discuss capital improvement projects to make sure that Marion's aware of everything that's coming down the line and where their money is going and how we're keeping the plant up and running. So.
And I might just add, just for clarification, the plant not only treats wastewater from Marion, but also Hiawatha, Robbins, Paylo, and a little bit of Lynn County.
So that's what we got.
Yeah, so that's the presentation. We're happy to answer questions. We'll let Brian answer.
Okay. If I. Sure, we have some questions. I just have a question. The, oh.
If I just.
Yeah.
For clarification, I wanted to be, I want to make, first, I want to thank, thank you for taking the time to come to tonight, for sure. And then also, just to the work that we're doing, working together with our metro communities, I really appreciate Cedar Rapids being at the table for those discussions and looking at what those potential options and future options are for us. I want to, I do personally want to thank you for that as well. But the other clarification is, as far as the recalculation capacity agreement, that is not on the agenda for tonight to be or next Thursday to be approved. It will will plan to put this on the twenty-third. We just want to give you an opportunity to get to get all of you up to speed with the progress that we've made along the way and and the different highlights and moving forward. So just to be clear on that.
And the numbers that you shared for Marion's share, is that in today's numbers or in twenty twenty-seven and twenty-thirty, whatever it was?
That's in today's numbers.
Today's numbers. So, okay. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got two questions. So you talk about this two hundred and fifty million dollar project. Is that coming about because of wear and tear or because of federal mandates? Because I've read articles in the past years about some smaller cities having some gigantic challenges with their treatment plants. So is is it one or both?
Both, honestly. So we want to stay ahead of the game and stay ahead of those federal mandates to make sure that we're not under consent decrees from the state for any reason for for any anything that you could think of. We're trying to stay ahead of that. But it's also wear and tear on the plant. As as we mentioned, it's been in service forty-two years. Wastewater is a hard environment, just because we always have a low level of hydrogen sulfide, creating sulfuric acid. So even special alloys corrode and deteriorate quicker than than anywhere else. So it's a combination, really, of both, Steve.
Second question. So the Marion's share is based upon the twenty-year population equivalent of sixty-one thousand. Are all the other cities involved in this doing their twenty-year calculations using the same methodology?
So far, we've only gotten into working with Hiawatha, and they have also retained Howard R. Green. So I'm pretty sure the the same methodology has been used to calculate that population moving forward. Obviously, you know, there's always some variances there, but I would say the same same formula was used, yes.
So you're not, are you mandating that methodology? Or is each city can come up with their own? So if the city Marion wanted to say, yeah, we want to lower bills, but we're just going to go with fifty K. So that's why I'm, yeah, I mean, we're trying to be, we need to have the volume.
Right.
So is this another question, maybe? Is that number adjustable in the future? Or is that kind of a number that just stays out there for a long period of time? This first, these percentages?
Again, we, that will be part of the negotiations in that long-term twenty-eighty agreement that expires in twenty-nine.
All right.
So one thing that we have talked about, and again, have have not gotten into that at all, but looking at maybe like a five-year look back or a five-year evaluation to see where every five years within that agreement, we take a look and see where we are, what are the projections. But no, we're not mandating anything. We, part of the agreement was to have Marion provide that growth number, which is is what Ryan and Kim have done through, they have no idea what form or method. So.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear the the twenty-eighty agreements will provide some flexibility in the future for all the cities involved. I think everybody should pay their fair share. And as long as there's an adjustment period in the future, I think that's terrific. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go council member Mensa and then Mayor Potem.
Hello. I don't envy you for the job you have to do and all of the different governments you get to deal with, in a very, in a very necessary service, but at the same time, a very complicated one. And I was, I was around actually during the flood of two thousand and eight and understand what you dealt with, with the plants and the different, because you treat, I don't, and I'm saying this as much for the people who aren't here who kind of observe this, you know, you you also treat industrial, there's a big component to that, right, of industrial waste. But that's not a big part of Marion, right? So we really work on the residential piece more than you're dealing with the community of Cedar Rapids. Okay. So when, maybe this is just more of a random question. I'm the newest person up here. But so as you go through and decide, like, what has to happen, and what improvements we need, and being the best service of these, does that get decided and then kind of told to everybody? Who is the governing board that kind of decides? Are the are the clients part of the decision to be like, okay, are we ready to take this on? We need to do this. This is going to cost these communities as we look at our taxpayer dollars and rates? Or is it, you all kind of saying this has to happen, and this is what's going to happen?
So the way, the way it works is the facility is managed and operated through the city of Cedar Rapids. So it is our job to evaluate and determine what is needed. Now, we have two consulting firms, national consulting firms that are working with us. And that's part of why it took two, you know, multiple years to try to figure out exactly what we're wanting and needing to put in to treat the kind of wasteload that comes down the pipeline to us every day. So it's, it's really Lauren and her staff and myself and our our design team and our experts that we're working with that figure out the what, the where, the how, and then move forward and figure from that point what that cost is and how that gets divvied out with the help of of others. So does that answer your question?
Kind of, yeah, I think it's just, I think it's important for people to understand, because this is a large, you know, these are large dollars.
Absolutely.
And so we're looking at costs. And I think, you know, my husband observes this, he knows this isn't a secret. So I can say it publicly, but it's kind of like, you know, we have baseline, we have the medium, and we have the top choices as we're going through things. You know, I tend to find something super expensive that I know he doesn't want. And I know there's something cheap. It's not going to be there. And I, but the thing I want is kind of in the middle for the pricing when I'm presenting something in a negotiation. So when I look at this, is it, that's kind of what I'm looking at, is we look at these costs that are coming at us, is it, we are going to be the model of what the future of this type of plant looks like, and we're investing that? Is it like, this is the bare bones? We've got to get in here to even keep this thing running? Or is it a, this will make life easier? Maybe we'll get some income? We're looking at new technologies in the middle type of pricing?
It, I would classify it more and chime in here too, but I would class it more in that middle section. As Lauren, Lauren mentioned, we value engineered a tremendous amount of scope out of this already, just because, yeah, we all, we all like the Cadillacs, the, you know, Rolls Royces. I drive a Nissan. So, so, yeah, I, I think we've taken a hard look at what we really truly need and make sure that we are are dealing with the conditions that we deal with on the wastewater side on a daily basis, that corrosion, that that aggressive environment, and making sure that we have a good plan that we can can be good stewards of the environment and making sure that we are really a resource recovery center versus a wastewater plant in the future. If you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, I mean, I would just add, you know, we, while Marion is one of our clients, we also have a lot of industrial, and we have our own residents, right? And so we have to respond to all of them and do what we can for all of you. And so that is always a thing that we keep in the forefront of our mind is that while we want to be on the forefront of, we don't want to be surprised by any regulations, and we don't want to be caught trying to catch up, right? And we don't want to be charged fees because we're not there. So we're trying to do what we can to stay up with regulation. The other, I, you know, thing is that it is a forty-year-old plant. And so trying to replace what we have while also trying to maintain operations and and make sure that we're doing what our mission is, right, which is cleaning the water and staying on top of our our permit limits. So it's all of the, probably in the middle. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to add on to that, having come from a community where we had to build a fifty million dollar state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facility is heavily, this is a heavily regulated sector. And the the state is, has a nutrient reduction strategy, which requires certain technologies to be deployed for larger facilities. So there is that. And and with respect to our stake in this, the that population threshold, that is one of those contractual requirements on us to provide to Cedar Rapids. So as they're going through and developing those plans to determine what should the future plant look like to handle that need, that was, that's why contractually was, it was required for the city of Marion to provide some of those growth estimates so that they could plan accordingly and not have to overbuild or plan for what is right down the road and and that future expansion as the region grows.
Sarah, do you have anything else?
Good, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
First off, I want to applaud you for, you know, the work that you've done on this and really the whole team that's engaged in this whole effort over the last several months. I mean, this is no small undertaking, and I liken it to you're trying to plan how you're going to fly a fully loaded aircraft and rearrange the seating, right? Because you have to continue service. So I guess the first question I have, and it goes back to the planning capacity. So we have a planning capacity of sixty-one thousand. Cedar Rapids has whatever that number is. Robbins, Hiawatha, et cetera, have their numbers. Is, is that the top end of your design basis for what you're considering now? Or is that merely a guidepost? And the, when it is as built, will it have a capacity that exceeds that?
Good question, Graham. So we will have a somewhat small percentage of additional capacity when everything, you know, everything gets added in, everything gets added up. There will be a small percentage of additional capacity. Marion's looking to grow, Cedar Rapids is looking to grow, everybody's looking to grow. And so trying to be aware of what that capacity needs is, and again, that's, that's the shot in the dark, honestly, because no one really knows what's gonna, what the future, you know, another forty years down the road is going to look like. So we are building some additional capacity in today. The other part that is nice about the way we are laying this plan out is that is somewhat modular. Now, there's still a lot of concrete that needs to be, it's not like you just bring in a skid next to the existing plant and plop it down and fire it up. There'll be work that needs to be done, construction that needs to be done. But we are building it in a modular type manner so that we can expand as if when something comes along and we need to add that additional capacity.
I would also say too, one really big benefit of having such a high industrial load is that we have to plan for that max industrial load, right? So there, there is some built-in capacity there because we want to make sure all the industries are covered, but that there is some flexibility then for cities to grow or because this, the residential load is a small percentage on or, you know, a percentage of it, that it's, we can, we can accept and adjust to those loads as they change. So.
Okay. The, the only other question that I have, and it's not directly related to your projects that you're defining at this point, but the flood protection that was put in place was the design basis of that to accommodate a flood like what we had in two thousand and eight?
So the flood wall around the wastewater plant is three foot above the O eight level.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Trust, trust me, the the biggest discussion we had with that project was whether it should be two foot or three foot. And the the core and Homeland Security really didn't care. So I voted for upping it to three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. By the way, my favorite mayor says eighty-one thousand is what your planning basis ought to be.
Anyone else? Do you have anything else to add? Oh, go ahead.
I came up with a question during all this, like, that two hundred and fifty million dollar project, do you have grants and whatnot that you've already secured or you're going after that could bring that two fifty down? Or is that two fifty already, maybe with some grant money?
We are continually looking for grant funding or any other funding that may be available. Our plan at this point, and we already have it on the intended use plan for the state state revolving fund program. So they, we've been in communication with them for last couple of years. They are more than happy to fund the project in whole and have the funding to do that at at what is still a very competitive or actually very, very good rate. So at this point, our plan is to utilize the SRF program. But any funding that we can get our hands on prior to that, either right into it or some of those other things that we value engineered out that may be of value in the long run, we'll reevaluate those ideas. So.
Sure. So is that something that we can work collaboratively, collaboratively on as communities to seek grant funding?
Sure.
Is there federal funding?
Grant funding, is there federal funding available, federal grant opportunities or?
There are, there is the uh, infra- infrastructure bill funding. The word that we've gotten from the state, all of that is going through the S R F program. It is forgivable loans. And we apparently at this point do not qualify as a disadvantaged community as a, as a. Whole, so we do not appear, and we're still running this down, but do not appear. To be eligible for that infrastructure bill funding.
Right, go ahead. Mayor, I just, um, as, as we've talked with the council, one of the things that we're really working on is with our, our external partners. Cedar Rapids, um, Horizons, Economic Alliance, making sure that we have regular FaceTime, have them come in and provide regular updates to the council. Uh, Lauren had mentioned that sixty, did I hear this right, sixty percent design? Close to sixty percent, so we still have quite a bit of way to go for the design. So as they go through that effort, get closer to ninety percent design, you'll get, be able to fine tune some of those estimates. And and we'll make sure that we're, we're providing a level of update to that, that estimate as we go through that process.
We really do appreciate you coming in. I think it goes a long ways to, I mean, you know, we all need to have. The information so that we can make good decisions and build trust and 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 work together and collaborate. So it's uh, it's really appreciated and uh, hope you'll do it again.
Sure, we thank you for, for the time here and the opportunity. We know it's a big project, it has major impacts on all of our, all of our uh, partners within this project. And and um, look forward to the future with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Chief Kitzmiller. Traffic camera ordinance.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Chief.
So last council, we brought forth some, some data and facts to y'all. About our staffing and some of the traffic violation problems we're having. Uh, you guys were open to uh, considering using A T E. Uh, as a way to combat some of that. But before I came back with a, a full blown ordinance to have you look at, I thought maybe I would. Throw out a couple of options to you, tell you kind of what I'm thinking on that, uh, and get some input before we uh, we go forward with that piece. I reviewed the ordinances from Cedar Rapids, Waterloo, Hudson, uh, Council Bluffs and a couple others. There's a lot of standard language in there, and I think most of it, of the standard language is probably in there because it's, it's been tested before in court. And they've been successful with it, uh, so I would envision a lot of that being in ours. I think there's two areas in particular that I, I've, um, I've got my. Opinion on that I want to give to you, but I want to get your direction on it too, and that's, that would be the, the appeals process. I know Councilman, or Councilwoman Metzner um, had brought that up. And then fines on what you're thinking on the fine levels, and I've kind of included that in here. So red light fines are pretty standard uh, amongst everybody. You know, I would propose that we do a hundred dollars. Similar to Cedar Rapids and Council Bluffs, Council Bluffs does not have speed cameras, uh, they just have red light cameras. Waterloo is kind of an elevated uh, system. Uh, and just for context, if an officer were sitting and watching somebody run a red light, the ticket's a hundred and thirty five dollars plus surcharge. And the court cost and it brings up to about a hundred and ninety five, so uh, this is less than what you would see with that. Uh, similarly, the speeds, so uh, Cedar Rapids fines double when there's a construction area out there. I pulled together some of the uh, uh, the state code numbers. Five miles per hour or less, over the speed limit, it's thirty five dollars. Six to ten miles per hour over, it's fifty, eleven to fifteen, it's a hundred. Hundred and twenty dollars for sixteen to twenty miles per hour over the limit. And then a hundred and thirty five dollars for twenty five, or I'm sorry, twenty one miles per hour. Or more, plus five dollars per mile over twenty. Uh, and again, that doesn't include the surcharge and court costs. So uh, I think this is reasonable. When you get up to somebody driving thirty one miles an hour over the speed limit, that's up into a reckless driving category anyway. And if we had an officer actually cited somebody, that would probably be a physical arrest for us, so. But I don't think using these, that will be too far out of line with what the other municipalities are using right now. So the appeals process, there's a couple of ways that other uh, agencies are doing it or other cities. I'm, I'm suggesting a hybrid, uh, where we give people two options. We could have, the first one would be a member of the command staff, uh, would be there, uh, that they could bring the ticket in and and contest it. Uh, there would be certain exemptions put into the ordinance, and those exemptions would be. Uh, say an officer had already written a person a ticket for speeding. Uh, right after they went through the light, the camera catches it, but then an officer stops him and writes him a ticket. Uh, we could toss that ticket, uh, if there's an accident and an officer directs somebody to go through the red light. Uh, they necessarily wouldn't be on camera, but if the driver's instructed to do so, we could, we could throw that ticket out. Uh, funeral processions, things like that, and that would just be a matter of um. A member of the command staff, a lieutenant or higher, listening to somebody explain why they did what they did. And if he felt it necessary, he could throw it out, or he could let it stand. Uh, we could also give them the option, if they wanted to contest it further, uh, or skip the, the officer um. Review altogether, they could just send us a form saying, I want this to be a municipal infraction. And at that point, we would just withdraw the, the camera ticket, do the municipal infraction and send it to the courts and let the judge decide. Uh, some cities do it differently. I think Summers is one or the other, I think for us. Uh, giving them two options on how to do it and two layers. Uh, again, I think that's fair, and if there's a reason to throw it out, we'll, we'll throw it out. Uh, and try to do it without them having to incur court costs and things like that during the municipal infraction. And this wouldn't necessarily preclude them with the exceptions. Uh, it wouldn't preclude them from citing another reason or fighting in another way. They've always got that option. I don't want to talk about that. So the other part of this too is I, I kind of envisioned putting together a policy that would go alongside with the ordinance. The ordinance would lay out the legalities, uh, the fines and things like that, that council would, would weigh in on, would do three readings. But I'd also like to have a policy that went along with it, then the policy would be uh, laying out. If we were to use a mobile camera, how would it be deployed and what rules would we follow internally to do that? Uh, my thought would be, it would be based off community complaints about specific locations. We'd limit, you know, forty eight hours uh, to putting it out there, uh, and we'd be very transparent about it. That, you know, twenty four hours before we put the thing out, we'd put it on our social media and say, hey, it's gonna be out at this location during these times. Uh, so people know that it's out there. I think the other thing we could do is if it ever got to a point. Where I thought we needed to expand the program, it would have to come back to you guys and it would be based kind of what we did the first time on the data. The data and the number of accidents, and you guys often would have final say, I don't want to be the guy saying. Let's put a camera on every corner. I don't envision doing that, uh, but I know for transparency purposes, there's people that think that that's what's gonna happen. And and I think this will help. Give some comfort to some of those people. And then also, I think in the policy, it would lay out how much revenue the vendor gets, because that's how this program's paid for. They get a percentage of, of any fines, and that way it's uh, cost free for us for the cameras. Uh, we've talked to the D O T uh, last week, I think it was Barklow and I and uh, the PAC group. Uh, we've got the requirements, we've got some packets we have to fill out for them. Uh, they said typically the vendors do that, and it's mostly about uh, working in the right away, uh, required signage. Uh, saying that it's gonna be speed enforced or camera enforced red lights, uh, things like that. So we'll get that, we'll get that worked out. But uh, unless you guys have some direction on the, the, the appeals, you want something different than what I've told you, or the fines you think are out of line. Too little, too much, uh, I'll go ahead and get with Karen, we'll start trying to put something. More concrete together to bring back at, at a future council meeting for you considering, like I say, there'll be three readings. Uh, community can certainly weigh in along the way.
Chief, if we could back up to the slide with uh, there, the fines. As I just looked at, at. The document you pulled together in the pack at the policy document. I was, I, I really was trying to understand, especially at the upper tier of violation, twenty one miles per hour and, and, and above. If those were sufficient fine levels. And as I see Cedar Rapids now, one of the things in a, I think in a different, for a different issue. I had commented on the consistency of enforcement and deterrence in the region. And I kind of just wonder if our twenty one to thirty. And if our uh, thirty one plus. Uh, fine levels need to be amped up a little bit to have a greater performance to what Cedar Rapids is doing. And the whole idea here is fundamentally, it's deterrence. Uh, you know, in our perfect world, nobody would speed.
Yes.
And um, and, and but based on that video you showed, somebody blowing through a. Uh, blowing through a red light at elevated speed, I presume. We want to deter that, so I, my recommendation, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about this. But I would like to see those notched up a tad, uh, in order to have a little more congruence with what Cedar Rapids has got.
Yeah, when I, when I read this over the weekend, my, this, the, the slide that probably caught my most attention. Because I was a little bit confused. Of course, I didn't see the thing about Cedar Rapids or Waterloo. And while I said I would prefer to be tough on speeders. When I saw the five to ten, that surprised me and I'm even more surprised to see. The first two lines for Cedar Rapids, because it was my understanding, maybe I'm wrong. That tickets on the cameras were not issued until they were over twelve miles per hour over the speed limit.
Yes.
And that's. Is it twelve or eleven?
I believe it's twelve. And that's the.
So, so, okay, so explain the one to five and the six to ten under Cedar Rapids. Because that contradicts what we're just talking about.
The, so the camera, the, the thing that triggers the ticket is, is input by the police department through the vendor. You tell them what, what the cutoff is.
Right.
On when you want a ticket issued. Uh, it's, it's probably no different than having that in an ordinance. Uh, uh, one to ten. From, from experience and from our officers, you know, we don't advertise that, but there is some uh, discretion used by the officers. And under normal circumstances, they won't issue a ticket, you know, for anything under ten over. And that's just, uh, that's just the way it's been forever. But I think the fact that they've got it in there, they could if they wanted to, but it, they just set it at ten, I think to mirror that discretion.
Maybe I'm interpreting this wrong. So the speeding fines you have here is what a police officer could write on a speeding ticket for.
These are, these are the actual what their uh, camera fines are.
These are camera fines, so you can have a camera fine just going.
One mile an hour over the speed limit. If you were so inclined to do that.
Yeah, so they can have this, but, but it's calibrated to not do it less than twelve.
Correct.
Okay, so that's my point. To me, that's one of the key numbers to zero in on is what do we want to do? Because when I saw the five to ten, I thought that was, well, I want to be. Tough, I'm fine making that statement, I've done it before. Five to ten seemed to be going a little low. It doesn't take much to go five over by anybody. I mean, I'm gonna be guilty of that myself. So I don't know where to start that. Twelve always seemed to be a little high, five seems to be a little low. So I don't know where everybody else feels on where that cutoff should be, but I think that should also be part of the. Uh, discussion or what your recommendation is.
Sure.
From your department as well.
I'm gonna try to articulate what we talked about during our pregame of this last week.
Okay.
And that is. You might have to help me out here, Chief. We've got the stated speed limit. And then if we start. Doing differences like that, well now, are we, we're, we're openly advertising that it's acceptable to go above that speed limit. So.
I agree.
So having that range, the calibration is dependent upon our police chief. In consultation with the city council, what is that acceptable limit? Um, I don't know if that's something that we openly want to advertise, because we don't want to openly advertise. It's okay to speed in our community and you'll be, you won't get a certain fine if you, if you stay under this, this threshold. So we were actually, we were having that, that discussion on Friday. Do you want to add a little bit more color to that, or if I misstated?
No, I think that's, that's pretty much what it was. We don't want to, you know, tell people it's okay to drive sixty five on Highway one hundred. Even though they may know it, and they may know, hey, I'm not gonna get a ticket unless I'm going ten over. I, I just think it's a bad practice for us to, to put it in writing.
I, I, I understand where you're coming from. Everybody around here knows it's twelve over in Cedar Rapids.
Yep.
I mean, everybody knows that. You're gonna get a history of fines eventually, that everybody's gonna talk, everybody's gonna say, I didn't get a fine until I was ten over, twelve over. I mean, that becomes public knowledge eventually. And if you want to change it later, I guess maybe this gives you the latitude. If everybody knows it's ten, I'm gonna change it to eight or whatever, so I, I understand that part. But I, I understand your point.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, everybody knows it's twelve over in Cedar Rapids, so. Okay, I understand where you're coming from with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Atkins?
I have a couple of questions and I'll give you my perspective on this. So what are we talking about? We would have permanent cameras at two intersections that would be both red light and speed cameras. And then we would have a mobile camera that we could deploy to other locations.
Correct.
Okay, wanted to make sure I understood that. So I think um, one of the things you said was about folks could contest. Potentially their ticket that they received. Um, I think it'll be really important that we have very clear objective criteria and that we advertise that. We make it public knowledge that in the way in which you can, can contest it, right, here are the five criteria. If you don't meet those, you can come in and plead your case, but probably not gonna get you anywhere. Right, Wes, I think that protects your, your individuals, so there are not any biases in, you know, contesting or, you know, sort of waving the ticket or not. And maybe it uh, it encourages some folks that want to come in and plead their case, listen, like, it doesn't fit the criteria, you probably should take another path. If you want to do that, right? So I think something to consider on that. Um, and then the, the idea of where we would put the mobile cameras, I think you had noted something about um. Resident complaints, and so I think that's another place we'll just wanna, you know. You don't want it just one resident complaint, right? Like, what are the criteria in order for us to deploy a mobile? So I'm sure you've thought about that, but I think that'll be another thing that we'll want to be able to clearly articulate and be very transparent about it. The uh, the other thing that I had listed here, so I think what you have makes sense. I don't have any sort of, you know, what it should or shouldn't be. Um, and what that, wherever, is it twelve? I'm not sure. We will figure it out and I will make sure I don't get any tickets. So this will be helpful for me. Um, I think another thing that we, I don't think that we've talked about is how do we plan to use the revenue that will come from this, right? So there, there'll be some revenue that comes from this, and I think that's a place where oftentimes um, the community makes assumptions. Um, that are inaccurate, so I, well, we've talked about a little bit, but I don't think we've been, um, it's been real clear. So I think that'll be something we'll want to make sure that we attach to, right, when we decide to, if we move forward with this. What are we doing with the revenue at the city?
I've seen that in some of the emails that have come in, the people I read, the ones that, Rachel's been, do you want to?
In, in short, upfront now, and we'll, we'll make sure that that's something that's articulated in the draft policy that comes before council. But um, as we've talked about it, um, this is, this is a public safety initiative. And so any funding that would come in as a result of fines. Um, would, would first go towards the police department and then uh, secondarily, uh, the fire department. Um, but hopefully people don't speed and we don't have to worry about.
Just the la- last comment I'll make is I've had folks share with me that they're in support of it, especially when you talk about the two intersections we've talked about. Uh, everybody seems to have an example of when somebody blew through a stoplight and was nearly missed. So I think that's been uh, good to hear that, you know. Initially, I think folks were thinking we were gonna put a, a red light camera on every intersection, but it's not what we're doing. So I think that's important for you to know, that would be the feedback that I've heard at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the, the, the videos and those data that you showed us, the statistics, I think, really need to be put out there. So that people see that this is a well-founded reason. Um, this isn't just something that, you know, we're doing for, even, even if you're saying it's gonna, the fun. Um, this isn't just something that, you know, we're doing for, even, even if you're saying it's going to, the fun, the, the money would go, uh, towards public safety. Um, I think people, people would still poke holes in that. So, um, I, I think showing the reasoning of why we got to where we are is really important. Um, to help us explain that to the public. And I think, like I said before, most people, when given all the facts, come to the same reasonable conclusions than the majority of people do, uh, when you give them the, the reasoning. So. Okay, um, did you have another question?
Yeah. This really just relates, um, I guess, um, I think Colette commented about our problem intersections, one hundred and thirteen and, and, um, what was the other one? One hundred and thirteen and, uh, one fifty-one and?
Yep, one fifty-one and thirteen and one hundred eastbound.
So those two intersections, um, I, and, and I shared, I think, with you earlier today, uh, how study bill one sixty-one got converted into House File six twenty-nine and placed on the agenda. And that, that would encompass, though, the requirements of that legislation would encompass those two locations.
Yes.
But any place else we choose to have, uh, automated, um, traffic enforcement within the city, as long as it's then within our municipal control, none of those requirements, um, apply.
Correct.
Okay.
Primary and secondary, the ones that they're addressing with the, the legislatures, uh, now.
Okay.
I think, and we'll see. I mean, I know they've had these in the past and we'll see where that, where that winds up. Um, you know, even if it turns out to be just a regular regulatory, uh, rules, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm confident that the data that we presented, uh, if they set a standard for when traffic cameras are warranted, that we would meet that standard based on the debt we provided.
Sarah?
So we're talking about for now, those two intersections. That's it, right? I mean, if what's coming to us, coming forward is a potential mobile with some sort of criteria of when that would be out and those two intersections only.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of the feedback we had received as this conversation has come out, people, there was a few pieces of feedback that were like, um, are there other ways that could help those intersections, reduction of speed leading up to those intersections, um, timing of the lights, you know, are they quick yellows? Are they, what happens with that? Um, has there, has there been discussion on that or has that been looked at? I'm sure there's data as to why that works or doesn't work or what's happening, but.
So there's actually a couple of items later in the council agenda. One of them is moving forward with re-timing our signals within the city.
Okay.
Um, you don't want to just shorten the yellow times just to increase revenue. We want to make it safe. Um, so that'll be something that's looked at. And then obviously the intersection itself, you suppose on one hundred, we're going to redo that signal. Um, so it's going to be a completely new signal. There's going to be new turn lanes added. And then again, that's a, an agenda item that we're going to talk about later today.
Okay, so in other words, I'm a, a little ahead of that, but okay, I, I thought I would just, as we had received that, that we have a conversation or discussion point for folks that that was not, that it was looked at, that was part of our.
Yeah, this wasn't the first option we went to. It's just, we, we just got to that point.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve? I got one more question, chief, and this really isn't for you, but it relates to the ATEs and it may be to that, that lady back there with the green sweater on. And I don't need an answer tonight. But, but I had a conversation actually with somebody with a business person, uh, today about the traffic cameras. And the question I have that if there's any, maybe there's nothing out there about it, but the question I have is, is there any data out there where cities with traffic cameras has resulted in a reduction in tourism and visitors? I'm not sure you can, there's data out there, but I just, you know, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as a tidbit in saying, let's make sure as we continue marching down this road that we're looking at all aspects. So maybe there's nothing out there, maybe there is, but if it can't be answered today, which I didn't think it could be, I'll throw it out there for a future.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look for that. And I, I, Ryan, it reminded me, we did, uh, have an article, there was, there was one from, um, Council Bluffs that was in the Omaha News, I think it was last week or the week before. And the basis of it was the Iowa Legislature, uh, the, the bills that were coming down the pipe. And the city manager out there said that when they put in their, um, red light cameras, I think they've had them for three or four years, that the first year they had like two point two million dollars in fines. And he said, this year they're on track for seven hundred thousand. So to me, that shows something's working. You know, I don't know if it decreases Council Bluffs, you kind of have to drive through there if you're going east-west, you know, you don't necessarily have to get off the highway, but um, to me, that just showed, you know, that these things work when it's that. I'll look for the, for the tourism piece, uh.
Go ahead, Randy.
Chief, can you refresh our memories, um, on these, uh, lights? Are these constituted as a misdemeanor or do these actually show up on the U four file when an officer pulls down the DOT report? And they can see three of these violations and then they've, they've cited them for a moving violation in person at that time?
No, they don't go on a driver's record because it goes to the vehicle owner, not the driver.
Okay, so, so the, so the reckless, let's say they were thirty-one over and the camera catches them, then that wouldn't actually go in as a, as a reckless
No.
speed then, nor would it require a state filing with the state of Iowa for SR twenty-two.
Correct.
There's a big stigmatism out there where people are aware of this. And so it doesn't put a lot of meat into it when they don't realize it doesn't affect their, their DOT rating, you know, we see MVRs every day and, you know, um, they tell a story, but unfortunately it doesn't put the bite in the, so for a youthful operator has, or any operator has three of these, then it doesn't go towards their violations of losing or suspension of driver's license.
Yeah, no.
Not, not like a regular traffic stop. Okay, thank you.
Right, right.
So I just thought of a question because of what Randy asked. So if someone doesn't pay the fine, what happens?
So there's different things we could do. We could file it, we could go ourselves with the municipal infraction, change it over, go to the court, get a court order to collect it. There's the tax, what's an Irish?
Iowa offset program is another option for cities to use, which I'm sure the city probably uses for some things already, the liquid utility counts, uh, such.
Basically, you file with the state and then when they get their tax refunded, it would subtract out any amount owed. And again, on that, I, I think you'd have to weigh out the cost, you know, of, of, of doing something like that. Waterloo, Waterloo's ordinance allows them to seize vehicles. If they get three or more, they deem the vehicle nuisance and they can take the vehicle and hold it until fines are paid. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, other question, I think you talked about this last time, that it, let's say we put up red light cameras at the end of those two intersections. Can they only be red light now and then be like flip a switch and they do also do speed in the future?
Yeah, we could. If that's what, if, if the council decides they want red light and not speed, we could do that. And have the option of, like you say, flipping a switch later on if you looked at the data and said, hey, this is, there's still cars speeding through here. We ought to try this. That's up to.
Uh, in my mind, right now, my mind is going towards red light only, not doing any speed, but I guess it wouldn't. Yeah, my mind, I'm thinking just red light. But, thank you. Let me clarify that. Red light and then having a mobile one also.
Okay.
That could be used in certain spots if needed, if there's problem areas, but not uh, speed camera permanent right now at intersections.
Doug?
I just make one comment, and this kind of goes to the economic development tourism comment. These are showing up in Strawberry Point, Iowa, West Union, Independence, Old Wine. They're going to be in almost every community, in my opinion, to some extent. So the fact that they're in Marion or Cedar Rapids isn't probably going to make somebody go to Dubuque because they're going to be in Dubuque also. So I don't have any data, but I just thought I'd throw that out. So many cities we work with are all instituting these to some, to some effect. And the other thing that has come up, and it's probably not as maybe important around a community like Marion and Cedar Rapids where there's a lot of cameras, um, they're also a law enforcement tool in some communities where there's been crimes committed. Usually people maybe speed away from a crime. They can use these cameras then to identify license plates of vehicles that were in the proximity of a, of a crime. So there have been some other benefits identified in the other communities as well.
When you say that, that, are you talking speed cameras or red light cameras?
Speed.
Speed, okay.
Yep, all those, and they're different situations. Of course, those small towns don't have the force that Marion would have. Uh, but they still have law enforcement and they've used them in these problem areas and you could argue for revenue generation, but all of these cities over time do show that the revenues drop from year one to year two to year three, uh, because people become aware of them and it changes their behavior.
But not the visitors?
Probably not the visitors, but, and when I was a visitor to Cedar Rapids before I worked here, I experienced the pain. But in the two years I've been here, I haven't. So I, I have been, uh, my behavior has been altered.
Yeah. To, oh, yes, go ahead.
I kind of follow on to Will's perspective relative to red light and not speed, I think is what you said at, uh, at a critical intersection. I guess I'm just, I, I'd like us to think about the spectrum of enforcement. Um, you know, is there, is there a compelling reason to couple speed with red light monitoring at those locations? What does data tell us? Um, and, you know, are there other potentials where if we are monitoring speed, it is a deterrent for those situations that create a risk for somebody who's making a right-hand turn into the, into the intersection and, you know, somebody plows into. I, my only point is, I don't, Will, I think we, we could be data-driven on that or perspective relative to, um, you know, the, the range of enforcement that we need in an area to be effective.
Just, uh, I guess you could do data-driven and for speed, I would assume again that these cameras you could have, you know, set to give tickets for red lights, but they're also going to track what that speed of that car was when they went through the light, where you wouldn't have to give a ticket for a speed, but you would get the data of how fast these folks are going, where they're running.
Flag every car in there and they could give us a report, kind of like I did with, with you all when we put that, the, the mobile one out there.
Sure.
You know, we had a hundred and fifty cars and twenty-eight of them were speeding thirty miles an hour over.
So I guess if, if the data showed that most of the red light tickets, folks are going fifteen, twenty, thirty miles and over or whatnot, that might make it more, um, might make me support speed camera also if the data was there.
Yeah.
Because right now, I don't think the data is there for those intersections. You had data for on highways, but not at the intersections.
Yeah.
Do you have what you need or do, or do, or do, are we still?
I, I, right up till the end there, you had me. So do you want, in the ordinance, do you want me to, do you want me to bring two? One that's got both or one that just has red light with the option of adding speed at council's discretion or do we put that in the policy piece? I, I'm looking to my left for some.
And, and I, I think that's one of those policy points that we'll really need some, some consensus on from council.
So I'm happy to support both the red light camera and the speed at the same time. That's where I am. I hear what my colleagues are saying, but I think what you're needing from us is sort of where we are. And I am comfortable with having both of those from the get-go.
Both.
Both.
I'm a both.
And both, but there's always a but, right? Um, but I do, coming back to some of the questions we were talking about, like, you know, just firming up location, if we decide, I, I would also like to see and be very, very um, transparent that, you know, we're doing these two and everybody's like, yeah, it's a slippery slope. You start with two, next thing you know, we got ten. Um, that, you know, we have some sort of a set a timeout here that we're going to reflect if we're going to decide to expand this or what that looks like. You, Ryan said.
Counsel, Councilwoman, uh, one of the things that I was going to add, and you're hitting on that, is just like the ATV ordinance, um, and fireworks ordinance and the New Orleans ordinance, we would schedule that to have a, a, a regular review so long as the, the council is comfortable with how it's being deployed. And, you know, in the policy, the policy that would be developed would be approved by the city council. So that would be our guidelines for operating, deploying, whatnot. So if there was ever a point where council felt that there was a need to deploy more, it would have to come before this body in a public setting, advance notice. So we're being completely transparent. So there's, there's, um, the ordinance allows us to do it. The policy guides us on how we do it. Both of those are, are done at the pleasure of the, the elected officials.
Great. And I, and I think as Colette had mentioned, like in the revenue, all the kind of conversations that go with that, I mean, I, I just want to be real open with folks because people just, you know, you, I don't want to feel like people were, that we're saying one thing, oh, it's for safety, but then it's like, oh, everybody goes, that's a revenue grab. And oh, it's, I mean, you know, I just, we just have to be careful how we're discussing this because of, of those facts of, we, it's not, it's, this was brought forward because of, we do not have the manpower, power to sit at these lights and watch things as they're happening. We've had a fatal accident at one. We're on the brink of what's going to happen at the other one because we all have had very close um, encounters at that intersection with people going through there. So I think, you know, the conversation as to why we are at this point is really, it's about the safety. And, and that's for real. That's not a, you know, that's not a line. I think we have to.
Yes, to me, the more compelling, I mean, it's, it, the, the running the red light is the compelling case for safety. You know, I'm, and I'm really trying hard, you know, you know where I started on all this. Um, so, and I, I'm not saying I, I can still be convinced because I think we've gotten to a point in our country that where people think they know everything and they're not willing to be convinced. And that's, that's why we are where we are. Uh, but that's a, for another time, but I am willing to be convinced, uh, so, but it is fundamentally, I just think the, the less, the better. But, um, yeah, I think there's a compelling case for safety, people running red lights. Um, not so sure about the, about the other, but I, I'm willing to consider it. Yeah.
And red lights only. Okay, all right.
I thought we had four. I thought we had four, if you know.
There are four.
Yeah, I was looking at.
There are clearly, there are clearly four who would be for, for both. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, chief. Chief Fagan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, here before you to, uh, give you an update on our fire department plan review process. If you recall, uh, this was a process change that we brought forward, uh, this past year, um, in December, uh, requesting emergency action to begin outsourcing the process of plan review for uh, fire protection systems and development and redevelopment. And so this discussion, I just gave a, a real succinct background originated, um, even prior to, um, a workforce reduction where we temporarily have had a, a member of our Fire Prevention Bureau out for an extended amount of time, which really expedited this action. We had seen this as a potential opportunity to expedite of the, this review process. The value of a fast plan review process ultimately is a return uh, interest to, uh, our business community because they potentially get their permit and can open for business sooner. And so this is a very important process for us. It ensures that, uh, the fire code, uh, is followed and that we have these protection systems in place, uh, to protect our community. And so with, with that, um, uh, drop in, in our, in our staffing in the Fire Prevention Bureau, uh, this was expedited uh, for an emergency approval to outsource this review procedure. Uh, and just to give you some context, and I'm going to share some great news with you tonight on the outcomes of. Uh, and just to give you some context, and I'm going to share some great news with you tonight on the outcomes of this process, which is fantastic. Um, prior to, uh, this, this new procedure that, uh, we've been following, uh, the plan review process when we were at full staffing was about two to three weeks for the plan review. Uh, and so ultimately fitting that back into the system, that was an extended review. Um, with the drop in the workforce, that extended out even further, which is what prompted our immediate action to, to fix this, this challenge for us. Uh, since that time, we've been working internally, uh, with our partners in the city, um, to not only see where opportunities exist here, but potentially where they exist more broadly in, in, in the plan review process across the entire city. We've coordinated and communicated, uh, with our partners, uh, prior to and during this trial period, uh, working with, um, city manager Kim Downs or deputy city manager Kim Downs, Dave Pocket, Gary Hanson. Uh, we've connected with the chamber and with Medco as well, and all agree the quicker turnaround for the plans will be favorable uh, for developers, builders, contractors, uh, comparatively to the cost. With this process, this, this rapid change that we made, intention as a part of this, in order to get it funded for the outsourcing was it had to be subsidized within the fire department's budget. And so these costs for the plan review currently are being paid for out of the, the fire department's operating budget. The intention for this change, in order to have this higher value return for this process is that this would be a pass through cost ultimately for the twenty four budget. And that was proposed as a part of our, our twenty twenty four budget is that sixty thousand dollars uh, would be dedicated within the fire department budget as a pass through cost. There would be a cost for the service that would be going to the contractors and developers. Um, that essentially would cover the cost for, for this, but those fees would be collected internally. The great news this evening, the great news is we've already seen a positive outcome in the turnaround of this plan review process. As I mentioned previously, we were at two to three weeks. We're now at five to seven days. Uh, just great, got that information, uh, from our deputy fire marshal, which is great news for our business community. Um, even to add on to that, we see a potential for even more process improvement there. Um, the update this evening is that, um, we've learned, uh, through this process that most third party contracts have the third party reviewer communicate and invoice the plant submitters directly. Currently that isn't happening. Currently we are in the middle, we're working with the third party vendor and with the, the contractors themselves. So we are a, an additional step in the workflow. We see a potential opportunity to even, and, and make this more efficient and more effective with direct communication with the reviewer and our business community. So as a part of this, um, we're, we're looking to investigate and incorporate that into our workflow, which will further enhance and create value for our business community. In order to communicate this opportunity and this process improvement, uh, along with several, several others across the city. And the city is hosting an open house event on March twenty third, uh, to begin educating developers, builders, contractors, et cetera, with the direction that we're heading. Uh, during that event, um, and potentially others in the future, we look forward to engagement with our business community, comments and questions, um, and to have this, and to help make this a positive transition. Um, this goal, um, is again to elevate the quality of service that we are providing and a high level of customer service with a faster return on their permit, while still going through the formal permitting process to ensure the protection systems are in place for the fire code. The goal is to have an additional lunch and learn even as after the event on the twenty third, uh, or a similar event, uh, to reach as many of our clients as possible during this transition. Following these community engagements, we'll bring back the final process, an update for council approval tentative, tentatively approximately in May. And so as, um, manager Waller was explaining, this is us bringing an update to you on a new process that we're incorporating in, in our department. Um, there is a change here potentially where we see an opportunity for efficiency. And so, uh, we will continue to report back with you on any progress and feedback that we get from the community. But I'm open for any questions this evening.
That's awesome. Thank you. Go ahead.
Chief, um, are, i- is your department still in the, in, in the workflow insofar as to check the work product of our outsourced support? In other words, you do a confirming review of their, of their recommendations to the business?
We are in the workflow, um, but the, the, the actual review that's being performed by the third party, they are a a credentialed fire protection engineer. We currently do not have a fire protection engineer within our department. And so they are credentialed and certified, um, in accordance to the adopted fire code that we have in place.
So.
Oh, yes, we do inspect it.
Okay, so.
That's just that, that small piece for the plan review, we are still a part of the inspection in order for that, them to get their certification.
So you're cognizant of the findings of the third party review of the plan and, okay.
Yes, and I will add that, uh, we're finding the, the review is, um, a very high quality re- review. And, uh, there is some, some learning for not only our department, but also our, our business community that we look forward to educating uh, in order to have a higher quality submission on the front end, based on this review. And so, yeah, we are seeing some positive outcomes.
Well, I think there's value getting out of the financial flow if you can do that.
Right, any questions?
Anyone else? You are obviously very excited about this, so congratulations on, on, you're, on, on the impact you're having, so that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can see that you're, you're just really excited about it. That's, and so are we, that's, that's great news.
Uh, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Topsoil sampling policy and procedure, hello?
Hello, I am Thomas Doyle. I'm an environmental specialist and then in the engineering department. And I'm going to be talking about our proposed topsoil sampling procedure. So in summer of last year, council requested that we look into the city's existing topsoil policy. And that was in response to, um, trees dying in subdivisions or new subdivisions. So after we looked at our existing topsoil standards and what we're doing to enforce them, we came to the conclusion that the current issue is more of one of effectively enforcing the rules that we already have in the book. So getting into some of the existing rules around topsoil, so every, uh, building site over one acre has to take out a DNR permit. Um, and while this does have language regarding topsoil, um, it's too vague to enforce. It used to include language on a specific topsoil depth, but that has since changed. Uh, the city has adopted SUDAS and, um, SUDAS does call for, um, minimum topsoil depths. And SUDAS is also referenced in the city's erosion and sediment control chapter. So as far as topsoil enforcement has gone in Marion so far, um, there's no established standard operating procedure that staff uses. And there's no clear enforcement action in the case when a site is in non-compliance. Um, and samples that I took, uh, last fall indicated that a majority of the sites weren't meeting the standard that SUDAS sets for topsoil deaths. And just briefly to touch on why we care about topsoil, so, um, if you remove topsoil, you're going to have a lot less water absorption. And that's going to be the poor vegetation establishment, you need to water it, fertilize it more. And it also creates more wa- uh, stormwater runoff, uh, when it rains. Um, and topsoil forms very slowly, so if it's stripped and removed from a site, you're not really going to have it back in any, uh, quick amount of time. Um, and so the initial request was for us to look at topsoil as relates to tree health. And we just want to clarify that, um, there's a lot of things that are going to influence whether your tree lives or die in a new yard. Um, and topsoil isn't the only thing that's going to impact that, but, um, having a healthy layer of topsoil is definitely going to help. So the purpose of the procedure that I'll be going over in the next few slides is to improve the soil conditions in Marion by establishing a topsoil testing procedure, um, that allows us to enforce our existing topsoil rules. Um, and the goal of this isn't to introduce any new, um, additional topsoil requirements. So the proposed procedure would apply to all sites that are taking out an erosion control permit in the city. So that's every site greater than an eighth of an acre. Um, and we would plan on starting enforcement for it in May. And we want to delay in that because it would give us time to inform our builders and developers um, that there is a standard in place in the city and that we are going to be, um, enforcing it. And in order to provide the information to builders on this, um, if this procedure were to be approved, we are going to, uh, present on it at the builder and developer meeting on the twenty third. And as part of the erosion, uh, control application that, um, is required for all sites, um, we would include an acknowledgement for the builder to say they understand that there are topsoil standards. And we'd also, um, include, um, uh, requirement in the site plan that has to be submitted with erosion control application. Um, that would have to include the proposed depth for the topsoil on the site and the source of the topsoil. Um, so just to really make sure that builders understand that they're going to have to meet these requirements. So getting into the actual testing procedure, so when a topsoil inspection is requested for a building site, um, the inspector, who would be me or stormwater coordinator Steve, um, would go to the site and take four, uh, random samples with a, a push probe. And then the depth of the topsoil would be identified using visual indicators like color and, um, the soil texture. Um, the criteria we'd use to pass or fail these would be, um, that at least half of the samples would have to have six or more inches of topsoil. And the mean topsoil depth would have to be greater than five inches. And this, um, provides a little bit of leniency and because you can't perfectly spread topsoil uniformly over a site. So some areas may have more, some areas may have less. So this provides a little flexibility, um, as opposed to having the eight inch standard that SUDAS sets. Um, and because, uh, measuring topsoil just based on these visual indicators, um, can be a somewhat subjective measure. Uh, we'd have options to appeal fail tests. And in the case of an appeal, the soil could be tested quantitatively. And so in the case of an appeal, we'd send the, um, sample to a soil lab. Um, SUDAS has a standard for percent soil organic matter that qualifies soil as topsoil or not. Um, so we would take the soil sample, send it to a, um, certified soil testing lab. Um, if it has more than three percent soil organic matter, the, um, topsoil inspection would be changed to a passing test and the builder would be refunded for the cost of the soil test. So we would enforce, uh, the results of the test through the issuance of, um, our occu- occupancy permits. So in the event of a failed inspection, it would prevent, um, the final occupancy permit from being issued. And the, we would not plan on having the topsoil inspection impact the, uh, temporary occupancy permit. And this is something that we've been, um, discussing with building, the building department to make sure that it's something that, um, would be feasible and that we'd be able to do. And not all sites are going to have the, um, six inches of topsoil, um, to begin with. And that's especially going to be true when you're redeveloping sites. So we don't want to put an excessive burden on builders and developers. So we'd provide waivers in the event that there's not six inches of topsoil to begin with on the site. Um, and the waivers would be provided if they can show us either through things like a, um, soil survey or just a measurement of their so- topsoil stockpile on site that there was not, um, enough sto- uh, topsoil to begin with. And even if a site isn't able to get a waiver, if they have exactly six inches of topsoil to start off with, um, one thing to keep in mind is that in your subdivision, you're not going to be spreading your topsoil over your impervious surfaces. So all the roads, all the building pads aren't going to have topsoil spread over that, those. So you're going to have a little bit, uh, extra topsoil. Um, so for example, if you have twenty five percent impervious area in your subdivision, um, six inches of topsoil to begin with effectively lets you spread an eight inch layer on all the non-impervious, um, parts of the subdivision. And there's current proposed legislation, um, that would limit the ability to control, uh, of cities to control stormwater related issues. And that includes topsoil. So, um, I'm just including this to say that even if this is approved, there is a chance if this goes through that it's not something we'd be able to enforce. Um, similar, um, legislation was brought up last year, and I don't believe it got anywhere, but we're keeping an eye on this. So in summary, uh, the procedure that I presented on is just for us to help enforce our existing topsoil rules in Marion. Um, and we are asking council to approve the topsoil testing procedure, um, on the agenda for Thursday.
Thank you. So the rule, the, the, the rules are there, we're just, we just want to start enforcing them.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. I wish I had six or eight inches of topsoil in my yard. Um, okay, questions?
Steve?
No, I'll just make a statement, I mean, I appreciate the value of this and, and enforcing it. I mean, when I built my house a number of years ago, I knew it had good black soil on top. And I told the contractor, I said, all that soil, when you dig that basement, I want that black stuff over here and the whole stuff over there. So the black stuff goes back onto my lawn and not the clay. So, I mean, I know Marion has a lot of areas that are rich in black soil, but also some that have quite a bit of clay under them.
Yeah.
So I think the waiver part, that's what I didn't understand, I think, that's when I read this the first time, is the waivers, if you're coming in and doing a, a large development, and if it doesn't already have six inches, then we're not going to uncover upon them the responsibility to bring topsoil in.
Right.
So to me, that's makes sense, otherwise that makes that extremely difficult. So they just need to be smart about how they use what's there, so. I, I like it.
So I live in an area that's been, uh, under constant development, um, for almost ten years. And I can look off to one of the areas still being built and I can see that there's a large, uh, stockpile of topsoil that gets moved around back onto, onto the lots that are fully built out and in the light. Um, and I think I might be a little bit like the mayor. I, I'm convinced that at least ten years ago, the sod at our house was put down on bedrock. Um, but I digress. Um, so the question is, is if a homeowner buys a spec home, gets in there and begins to question the amount of the topsoil that, that really is underneath the sod that they're desperately trying to maintain, is there, is there a pathway for a new homeowner to request a review of this? And then subsequently, what's the remediation for that?
Um, we don't have any sort of review process in place for that. That'd be something I would have to think about. The city does have a rebate program for soil quality restoration, re-airate and spread compost. So, but that's really the only thing I can think of in terms of existing homes that want to go back and look at their topsoil.
Well, yeah, I, so I guess that's, there's some number of spec homes, I presume, that are being built. And, and you mentioned the, the milestone that there was confirmation that there was adequate top sale for, to get a permit for occupancy. Um, okay, so d- does that apply also then to spec homes that get built and, you know?
Um, so the, that date of May, that would apply to all erosion control permits, which are at the very beginning of the building process. So, um, all houses that are under construction now, if they want to get their final building permit, they wouldn't have to go through this inspection because, and the reason for that is that, the topsoil, they may have thought that they didn't have to meet any standard for topsoil. So it may have just been hauled off site and that there might not be enough there.
So, so I guess, um, going forward, full implementation of this, I, I guess I would be interested if there can be some contemplation of a new homeowner to be able to request a review of compliance that I think would be useful.
Okay.
Collette? So I, I have a couple of questions, but Grant, are you suggesting that if it's already, the home has been built, that there would be a part of this process where you could go back and request a review?
It, it, yes, so it, it, fast forward, you know, to, uh, the current century.
Yeah.
If we were buying our house now, um, and, and this, the, this testing policy was fully rolled out. Everybody's aware of it. If I come in and, 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 um, look and have difficulties with my turf, we've been in the house, let's say, three months, that I have, there's a path. That I have, there's a pathway for an evaluation of, is there sufficient topsoil on my lot? That's what I guess I'm, and this may not even be appropriate, and I suppose there's a line of logic would say. Uh, buyer beware, you better check that yourself, but then they need to have an understanding of what, what our expectation is too. And I don't, I, i- what I guess I'm trying to um, negate is. Some homeo- homeowners downstream of purchasing the property end up spending a lot of money to try to get their turf to flourish. Because it is deficient with the, with the substrate material. So that's the, you know, and I don't wanna gum up the works here, proceed, get it in place, I am in favor of it. I just think that there might be some experience we can gain by trying to see is the, is the problem I'm describing a real problem? Or is it fictitious and I operate in the fictional world?
Okay, it's like Ryan has something to add and then we can go back.
Thomas, if I can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand this from when we did, had our pregame on Friday. The process that we, if, if everybody's okay, we'll put it on the agenda for Thursday. Once council approves that, we're gonna roll that out at our developers' breakfast. And it's implemented, once that's implemented, as part of the closeout of any building, any residential building. That would be a condition upon getting an issuance of a certificate of occupancy. If the, the soil standards have not been met. They would receive a temporary certificate of occup- occupancy, which is the flag that you're speaking of. To the homeowner, the purchaser, that it hasn't passed this aspect. Am I saying that accurately, Mike? So, so, so the, the process and the system i- is, is set up to capture exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, that works, thank you.
Can chime in here too, real quick, Steve Cooper, the stormwater coordinator.
Hi, Steve.
All of the builders and developers that I've been working with in my ten years here in the city of Marion. Know that this is their topsoil, they, they know the topsoil is a thing, they have to put it down. A lot of them already do, they know it's the best thing to do for their customers and the people who are gonna buy those homes. There's a few that try to skirt the system a little bit and just kinda do the bare minimum. So, in the meantime, like uh, for the homes that are already out there getting built, there's, they haven't put the sod down yet. It's gonna be in their best interest to follow this rule right now. So, I, I think that that's what you're talking about, that the, the, the homes that are already built. There are, we have a rebate program, which we're actually trying to update a little bit right now, put a little more funding into. Make it a little more uh, of an, of an incentive for existing homeowners to be able to do soil quality restoration on their lawns. So that's something that they could tap into as well, so that's the homes that are already built, the homes that are in limbo. Those builders are gonna know that they have, that this is the thing, that they've known it already, they're gonna have to make sure that it's on there. And then we'll be able to enforce it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, back to Colette. Sorry, that was ten minutes ago.
That's okay, no, really, I just wanted to make a comment now, I think, first of all, thanks for bringing, I think it was. Grant and I that talked about this earlier on about bringing something forward, so I appreciate bringing it back around. Um, and I feel like this is the first time maybe you've been at a city council meeting, so welcome and you knocked it out of the park today, like you presented. I mean, Grant didn't ask twenty-five questions, only ten, so that's how we gauge it. And I mean that in a positive manner, so nice work today.
Nice job. Do you have something to add, Grant?
No. He was itching to say something.
You asked our test, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Lo.
Uh. In my mind, i- I think if we, well, it's, it's already. An ordinance, in, in the ordinance that you have to do this, so I would, in my mind, I would say at that uh, builders' meeting or the meeting on the twenty-third. Just let everybody know, hey, don't forget about this, we're gonna be enforcing it, I wouldn't. In my mind, I wouldn't wait till May first, I just, if there is one that's coming up between then and May first, enforce it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't wait, I just remind everybody it's the twenty-third meeting, and.
I'd say the one thing that would make me hesitant is if there's a large subdivision that. They may have hauled topsoil offsite, which you're not supposed to, but it may happen, then. Yeah, well, and then there's a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of upset builders coming from that subdivision.
Well, if they know, if, if it's known, if it's, if it's in the books now, I am kinda tough on that type of thing, because what I do. Is I would say, you knew, you, if you didn't know, ignorance is not a defense, you're supposed to know. You pulled it away, bring it back. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents on that, but thank you for doing what, doing that, cuz it's, it's very important for. All of the homeowners out there, like Grant's saying, that, that we have good topsoil and good, good uh, good, good grass.
Okay, so we're all supportive.
Alright.
Alright, thank you very much, good job. Alright, Mike Barcolow.
Alright, so this one is very quick, uh, so to give you some boundaries of what we're talking about, we are south of Future Tower Terrace. We are west of Winslow Road, the easterly Winslow Road. Um, this is Osage, uh, that was, came in a couple times, um, and they reviewed it, one time it was, uh. Single family, uh, attached, now it's single family detached. Um, so with this, we have a trunk sewer that's along the waterway and they need to tie into that sewer to bring it into the subdivision. So our floodplain ordinance requires them to get a floodplain permit to go into the floodplain and do that. Um, so this is a permit that's issued by the city engineer, and so in the past, what we've generally done is brought this to the city council so that it's. Publicly known that this is gonna happen. Uh, this would be more important if they were gonna do mass grading and the right, the floodplain, so that everyone knew that. But I guess some feedback that we would like from city councils, do you want me to continue to bring every one of these to city council for your awareness? Is it something we wanna put it in focus? Um, if, you know, if it's something like this where they're just putting a cemented sewer in and then filling the trench back in and walking away, is that something that you even wanna know about? We just wanna know the level of, of concern, obviously, if there's a large site. That they're doing mass grading on, that you're gonna get questions on, we wanna bring that to your attention. But this one is kind of a no-brainer, so we all just wanna know that level or. Of what notifications the city council or the public want.
Go ahead.
Mike, using, using this one as the no-brainer example, is there anything about the work that they? Would do in this that could potentially have a negative impact on flooding in that area? Until such time, it is, I'll say, recompacted in, back to original state?
No, so in the, the comments, unless there is a high flood occurrence while they're out there digging the hole. Um, they would have a mess to clean up just because they would have an open trench that they'd then have to try and backfill. So there's not really any intimate danger to anyone that's downstream or upstream of this. Obviously, there'd be some spoils from excavating the hole and then placing the material there. So it's very minor for that short amount of time, again, this is something that generally as they go, they backfill. We do a compaction test to make sure they're meeting compaction and they're moving right along, so. This is completely different than, say, I wanna say it was uh, East Post and one hundred on the south side there, there was some major grading and everyone wanted to know what was going on. Obviously, we told them nothing was going on, they were just regrading and no one believed us, and.
Well, I, I guess, on that basis, with your commentary. I guess I just would leave it, it, for my own personal uh, benefit, just leave it to your judgment. Uh, and, and or your staffs as to what's significant for awareness. I, it just seems like, and maybe more broadly, there are some things that are. I'll say operational or executional in nature that. Don't have any real impact on what we might hear from, from our constituency, I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel, but that's my, that's kinda my.
I agree, I'd be, I'd be fine with leaving it to your discretion.
Agree.
As to, as to what, what rises to, to bring in. Well, I mean, you know, sometimes they just might wanna, the staff may want us to know about it and, you know.
If it was one that we knew was gonna happen, for example, uh, Bummin Meadows where they're gonna build the apartment complex.
Sure.
Um, that would be one that obviously we'd wanna bring forward because people see that one driving on Central. And so that would be a perfect one that I would wanna bring, so that the public is aware, but something like this. I would say no one knows that there's actually a permit requirement other than the developer and me.
Okay. Alright, thanks, Mike. Dave, bucket.
Great evening, I'll try to be uh, brief as well. Uh, this is part of the required annual report I have to give to the council for our certified local government status, our CLG status. Um, uh, this is a program um, uses some federal dollars through the state. Uh, it's a program that uh, cities, counties can tap into for uh, historic resources. Uh, mostly in planning resources, uh, nominations, uh, doing some survey and valuation, some of the background work before you get to a nomination of a, of a property or a district. Uh, Marion has been a CLG since two thousand, or I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-nine, uh, to, early two thousand. Uh, in that time, uh, we have accomplished fourteen projects using some CLG funding. Uh, everything from that background work, um, all the way up to uh, district and individual nominations, as well as an opportunity to attend a national conference. Uh, former city council member, um, actually in Des Moines that year, uh, uh, which was uh, a unique experience, we, we learned a lot in that one. In addition to our work using CLG funds, I would, I don't have the total amount that we've uh, received, um. But it's, it's well north of fifty thousand probably, over the course of our uh, life of the uh, being a CLG. Uh, so in addition to that work, um, the commission, uh, with Judy, mostly with Judy Hall's work, but with several commission members. She has, uh, we got put together six history books, um, genealogy books, they're probably the most definitive resource for um, Marion's history. Um, period, um, Oxley's books are wonderful, um, uh, for their time, but they did end and there was a lot of errors. And Judy was, took that where Oxley left off and brought it forward through the, to the fifth, I'm gonna call it our recent history, through our fifty, sixty, seventies, eighties. Uh, where there's a period of a lot of lost history in Marion. Uh, she was able to tell those stories through six books and those books, uh. I don't think there's many hard copies floating around for sale anymore, but they're, they've been digitized, they're on the Marion Library digital site. Uh, links on the city website as well. Um, I do have to go over some of the, our challenges we experienced over the last year, that's as part of this report, um. We've kind of run out of easy, low-hanging fruit projects, uh, our districts are pretty obvious, the ones that were very historic, we're, we're trying to find new districts to look at. Twenty years later, some of these districts are now historic that maybe not, were not historic back when we initially started. Uh, of course, uh, we've had vacancies on the commission, that's always been a challenge to fill. I forgot I had slides here, guys, sorry. Um, uh, we've had vacancies, we've had a couple of filling, I do have an application for one, so hopefully we'll be full on again. Um, uh, here in the next month or so, if I can get that application to the mayor and the council for approval. Uh, and then we just, with losing Swamp Fox, we've just kinda lost one of our biggest public engagement opportunities, having a booth out there. So we've, we've lost a lot of our, um, we've lost a lot of our, uh. Kind of our most outreach and some of our senior members on the commission have stepped down and stepped away from. From the tours and just, just their physical ability to do that has been diminished. So we don't have that local historian to kinda head, pick up the mantle of a Judy Hall or Pat Clattenstein that uh. Gave a good portion of their lives to helping preserve and share Marion's history. Um, so that's kind of our, our problems, but we haven't had a lot of achievements. Uh, and we've identified our goals and objectives, there's about fifteen or twenty on the page within the report. Uh, these are some of our big ones that we're trying to accomplish this next year. Um, we'd like to keep working with the wayfinding and work on informational signs along our trails for some of the, the things that are no longer there. Say the, the roundhouse or uh, where the depot used to be, I mean, that sort of thing, so we're still working through that. Uh, our biggest one is make HPC relevant again. Um, we were very active for a good fifteen years, ten years, it's kind of stepped back a little bit. But we are now expanding our roles to include review of historic structures in the uptown districts for demolition. Making recommendations on modifications for things that might be in our historic districts as well. We're gonna continue to identify future and local national register sites for potential nomination and apply for funding for those in the future. And then just again, the biggest thing is making HPC relevant, but it's also. Re-engaging the public and increasing public engagement, hopefully through a city showcase or. Uh, some of these other events uh, that are available for the, for the public, so we can get our, get our face out there. We do meet every Tuesday here at seven thirty in the morning, uh, I stopped serving coffee cuz they were hanging around too long. Uh, but it is, of course, a public meeting, uh, uh, really early in the morning, uh, so we, we do meet almost every Tuesday or every second Tuesday or every month. Um, I can take any questions, um, this is the annual report that has to get sent, uh, hopefully tomorrow, uh, to the state. It's a few days late just due to council schedules, but I'll get it out, so.
Um, has the commission, uh, or, is it a commission or committee?
Commission.
I've heard it referred to as committee, but it's.
I might have used terms, yeah, it is a commission, but I might have saved terms.
I think I've heard you say committees, so.
Uh, they're interchangeable for me, so.
Okay, so anyway.
It is, it is a city council appointed commission.
Uh, have they considered, and I, I, I know, I've talked to one or two of them about it in the past, but partnering with Uptown and.
Yep.
Putting placards on the buildings, listing the businesses that have been in those buildings over time.
Yeah, we talked about that years ago.
Great tourism thing and, and just, and a point of interest, you know.
Yep.
Be a good project. Anyone else?
Your honor.
Yep, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Dave, you, uh, in the packet, you had, um. Preservation goals and objectives for twenty-three through twenty-five and pending approval, but the one that jumped off the page to me was three A. Concerning uh, a specific project, survey and evaluation projects, Railroad District.
Yes.
I think you mentioned that, but given, given the forthcoming consideration and work that we're gonna do with the uh, caboose.
Mm-hmm.
I think that, that one kind of is co-energized by all of that, so I just wanted to make that connection. Cuz I think that'll also satisfy some of the. Concern that we might have heard regarding movement of the caboose.
Yep.
Who else? Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, sorry about the slides there.
But, hey. Alright, we're way behind on Rachel's schedule, so hope you're, hopefully you're not upset with us, Rachel. Okay, um. Now we're on to the discussion of the agenda for Thursday. So the first item that's marked for discussion by the staff is on page two of that agenda A five, is there anything prior to that? That merits discussion? Okay, we'll go to A five and that's, Ryan is gonna present that.
Thank you, your honor, um, Alicia Abernathy and the city manager's office have been running point on this, she unfortunately did not be here tonight, so I'm gonna. Uh, step in and, and help out, um. We are excited to present this recommendation uh, to you. This is something that has been in the works for some time. Uh, we've worked closely with our DEI consultant, Tom Newkirk, but also. Uh, have partnered with the Civil Rights Commission, the Mayor's Youth Council, the City's Employee Experience Committee. Uh, and our partners at Marion Independent and Lindmar School District. Um, on coming up with the recommended uh, equity statement that's uh, before you uh, tonight on the screen. Uh, if the council approves a statement uh, on Thursday, we plan to incorporate that into the city documents, uh, including the strategic plan, our, our employee handbook. Um, and we would, we would use it, um, pretty much as a branding uh, tool to, um. To, uh, to share to all doing business or working with uh, our, our community, that this is uh, what we believe. When we shared this with, with you all a few weeks ago, we received some few questions on the verbiage, um, so, Terrell, if you can, go to the next slide, please. The third sentence, the city expects alters the meaning of the statement, that was one of, one of the, the, the um, questions. Uh, the intention was to maintain a strongly worded statement that has some teeth behind it and sets the expectations for our, our uh, organization. The uh, the partners that I, I shared earlier, they had appreciated the meat. Um, that was behind the word choicing, uh, the word choices, uh, and then the second uh, sentence, people of all cultures and identities. Ex- uh, the question was asked if that excludes people of different abilities. It, with the, the selection of identity was intentional to use to encompass all.
With the, the selection of identity was intentional to use to encompass all identities, which would include. Which would include the abilities, gender identities, religious identities, disability related identities, et cetera. So we hope that this statement and the specific verbiage choice is representative of the message we want to convey to our employees as well as the Marion community. If there's any questions, I will do my best to answer those, and we can certainly be prepared on Thursday if there's any that I can't answer here tonight.
Well, that.
I don't have a question, I just want to commend the. Community here for the inclusivity that not just the statement has, right, and says, but the inclusivity, inclusivity that was used to determine the statement. That is, I think, models what we're trying to do, and so just, I think we need to call that out and celebrate that. It's been a little bit of a process to get here, but we're here and, and this is sort of the next step in us creating that inclusive environment in Marion, so thank you for that.
Likewise, this is, this is not an easy thing to put together, and I, I really appreciate the work that's gone into it and the process. That's been involved. So thank you to everyone who's been involved in it. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Next one is A six, Ryan.
Yes, thank you, your honor, this is just extending our current arrangement with Stefana, who's been helping us out in the HR department. This will take her time with Team Marion through the end of May, and that's to allow us to get. Those items under A seven and A eight up to speed. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is A nine. Do we need to discuss the prior items? Okay, A nine.
So I'm just coming before you to talk about, we're requesting approval for a new phone system for the city and PD. Currently, we're still using the Cisco system, which is over a decade old. Its routers are at end of life, we beginning, we began vetting the replacement solution over a year ago. We were looking for redundancy, more features, and something that works with our hosted ESAP or nine one one center at PD. That provided, or that proved to be pretty challenging. We have found a solution that checks all the boxes, and it also moves us closer to. Single vendor consolidation and helps us manage systems by providing a single pane of glass and familiarity with. And dashboards between our systems. It's also going to include features such as mass emergency notification, e faxing and cell phones, which all allows to. Move away from tethered handsets for positions that need more flexibility, and it also integrates with our P sap system. We were able to negotiate pricing and come in almost thirty grand under budget. And after doing a ten year cost analysis. We figure that it's going to save the city between ninety and a hundred thirty thousand dollars in the next eight to ten years. Questions?
Questions? Go ahead, great.
Is, is this capability? Hosted in our managed environment with, in Volta?
Yes, so currently it'll sit at our data center. On prem. Because technology is not there to do what we need to do for our P sap. You'd have to do like unencrypted SIP, which wouldn't be like very security minded.
Thanks. So is the next item? Related to that?
It is, but that's for consulting services, since we saved so much money on the, the cost of the phone system, we can engage. From the vendor, the manufacturer, they, they. Gave us that contact, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Nicholas? Thank you. All right, A eleven, through the next page, nothing is marked, any questions on those? All right, the next page, E four and E five. Okay, we'll move on to E six. My sec, mic's ready.
Yes, sir, so E six is our actual I O D O T contract for half a million dollars, the project's a little over a million dollars total. So this is to add the additional left turn lanes, the right turn lane for westbound and northbound. And then it also has the Q detection for those that are going westbound to southbound. So that if they're sitting in that turn lane because of that hill, you can't see when you pop over the hill, and there's a lot of rear end accidents. So it will actually be able to have flashing lights, so not the same ones that you've seen out there now that tell you the signal's going to change, but it actually tell you there's cars in the lane. And it'll flash. So this is just the contract with the DOT. The, the next item that we'll talk about is then going out and hiring a traffic engineer to go out and get this project underway. So as we talked about earlier, this is one of our trouble intersections with people running the red light. So again, this is one of the things that we do to provide safety, this was done as a, a TIP study back in the day, so that's. Traffic engineering assistance programs to the Iowa DOT, so we hired them to come in. We did the traffic counts, they did the analysis, and that's where they came up with the recommendation, we then used that recommendation to apply to T SIP, Traffic Safety Improvement Program. And I believe this was the third time we applied and got the, the funding. Similar to how we got the funding for South Thirty First and one hundred. So that covers E six and E seven, unless there's questions.
Just a comment. When, when did you start your role as the, the engineering director?
About four years ago?
Four years ago? I'm happy to see this happen because I asked your predecessor many years ago, why there's only one, why there's not. A turn lane in all directions at that intersection, and it was the only one there wasn't, so happy to see that it's finally. Going to happen, because that was a few years ago, that's why I asked how long you've been doing it, because I asked Dan about it, so. That's all, thanks.
Okay, so that takes us through E seven?
Yep.
E eight?
So E eight, this is the actual appeal, so we got direction. About a month ago to proceed with preparing the appeal, and then we also went out and notified all the residents that the new flood plain maps. Impacted, some of them were very eager to do their own appeal until they found out they actually have to put some money in on it, and so they didn't want to proceed with that. So we don't have any residential appeals, so we're kind of holding off on that. There's two items that we are appealing, one is this box culvert that's on central that we had a permit for that they did not put in the model when they built the model. The other one would be the, the Mooney property that would be. South of the new Winslow Road, north of Future Tower Terrace Road, where he did some grading, and again, had a permit for it. They did not reflect that work that was done in the permit and their, their model, so we, those are our two main appeals. In the council packet, there's a detailed analysis of all of that, but I won't get into the details on that. So this is actually proceeding with said appeal.
Questions?
E nine, so as a part of that study, and actually, this is after we remodeled. With what our appeal is going to be. One thing we wanted to bring up to city council is what's going to happen for the future Albernate Road Bridge. So again, to give you context of where this bridge is, it basically splits Willow Park. This spot down here is the Forever Green location on West Eighth Avenue, which would be the east-west street that you see here. This is the second street that becomes.
Trees forever.
Trees forever. The, the north-south street is second, that will become Albernate Road, and then ties into Bowman Meadows. Up here, so this is our bridge that we're going to build, that we did get seven million dollars of CPF funding towards. But one thing that we wanted everyone to know now is, in a large storm event. Water will be going underneath the bridge, but it will also be going through Willow Park. So in that high flood event, and as you know, we're a very flashy, floody area. That water will be about four foot over the road. But then, in a day, it'll go back down, it'll open the bridge back up, and here we have redundancies of other north-south streets. If we were to want to make this bridge so that it never would go underwater, it would double the cost of the project. So we have to make engineering judgments on, on what that does. Now, with the previous model, the FEMA versus the new model, because of the rainfall events have increased. It does affect it more than it was going to, but that's true regardless. So what we did is we showed on this map, what does it do per the FEMA map without the bridge? And then where is that impact with bridge, so you can see, we're not flooding people's houses by doing this, it's, this is what it would have done today. If this bridge wasn't there, and that's part of the zero rise that we have to do, we build a bridge, we can't just dam it up and. Let others deal with it, but wanted to make sure that it was known, so the day after we open the bridge, if we get that large rain event. It might be an instance where we can actually use the bridge, but. With our, our flash rain events that will decrease, and then in a couple of days, it'll be able to open back up. And it's actually better that the road flood versus the bridge, and so it doesn't damage that substructure. There is some comments in there about doing some armoring, and what that is, is basically from that. Superstructure or where your embankments are down. Instead of just putting riprap, we'll have to put some gabion baskets or something that actually holds the riprap there because of the velocities. But that's a minor inconvenience compared to doubling the project to making the bridge twice as long.
What's the? What is a significant rate event, I mean, for this purpose, what, what's the frequency?
Over a hundred year storm event. So that hundred year storm event, we're going to have a. But if you recall, like, so for example, Twentieth Avenue does as well. So that was one that it was open and about a week later, we had to close it down.
I'm not remembering that, but.
And that would have been, you know, the, the football and the, the track area, that area was underwater, and so you couldn't use the bridge, but again. Unless you drastically increase the cost of the project.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Ben.
So Mike, in this illustration, the, the yellow crosshatched area, the overflow conveyance protection area. Does that presently, does that area, let me restate this, has that area based on recent experience? And I'll say over the last five years, ten years, has that flooded anyway?
Yeah, and those large events, and so the blue area that's hashed there, that's actually the flood plain. The entire thing, so the water would, not just the yellow area, but the entire blue area, that's the area that would be underwater. Without the bridge that are being there, so.
Okay, so what I guess you're just saying is the presence of the bridge doesn't really change the expectation for the area flooded.
Right, so any bridge that you build today has to have what's called a zero rise certificate. So you can't, you can't just dam it up.
Anyone else? Was that it on that one, Mike? So. Proceeding means we're going to proceed to build this bridge.
That we're not doubling the size of the bridge, we understand that in high flood events, this is going to occur, and we're going to have to close the road down.
What's the projected timeline for?
We're not sure, we don't have our contract yet, depends on how fast the federal government gets us our money. I'll start tomorrow if they give me the check.
So, but this is just building the bridge, not the street?
So this will connect from Bowman Meadows subdivision where they have stopped, there's a small section that they still need to build, that's a request. And then it will go all the way down to Seventh Avenue or Marion Boulevard.
No, I get it, but like, don't we have to rebuild that street, or?
Yep, and that's part of the.
That's all part of the project, okay. Awesome. That's going to really, that's going to be an awesome improvement.
What, go ahead, what's the total amount for this project?
Off the top of my head, I want to say twelve million, so the seven million doesn't cover all of it.
Right, yeah, I was trying to remember what I think.
Going off the top of my head, it's around twelve.
Okay. Next item?
So the next item, again, we kind of like to celebrate the, the federal, the DOT grant, so this is actually federal money, but it comes to the DOT. So this is through the CNPO, so as you recall, Seventh Avenue was at one time the highest scoring project and was the most shovel-ready project. So we're at the point now where we're actually working in the background with Anderson Bogart under contract, doing the design for federal guidelines. And in the system, it's called TPMS, is the DOT system, they're at the point where they need the contract signed. So that's why the DOT has put together the contract, we actually don't get the money until fiscal year twenty-five, but we're trying to get all that preliminary stuff done. So that once that money is available, we can bid the project and proceed with it. So this is a contract for three point two nine four. We do have an application in for some additional monies that would go through the CNPO, so we might have to amend this contract for more money. But we at least want to proceed with this amount, and so again, celebrating that, the grant money that we can get in, so it's not a hundred percent on Marion taxpayers.
Yeah, go ahead. So can you remind us, again, a long time since I've looked at the details of this, is this complete? Street reconstruction, all the utility lines underground? So, but it doesn't have all the utilities, well, like sewer and all of that involved in this, does it or doesn't?
Yeah, so it does, so it will, we will bury the power lines, just like we did on the, the previous sections. It does phase out from the festival street that we have here, and it goes to more of a traditional street as we transition east. And it is considered what we call a road diet, so it's going to go from four lanes to three lanes, so you have one lane in each direction in the center turn right. And then that gives us a little more room, so we can actually get some sidewalk in there, some grass.
Oh.
There's not a lot of grass on that right now.
Right.
But in some areas, there is parallel parking as well, so, but that transitions as you head east.
What's the streetscape look like, though? The sidewalks and the.
So it's not going to be as fancy it is in the uptown, a lot of it is just grass.
But like the light poles, will there be light poles?
There'll be the black fancy light poles, yeah. There's no trail, there's six foot wide sidewalk on both sides, the problem is, there's not enough right of way, even with taking a lane away. We're adding a little grass, so there's a little bit of buffer between that, because if you look down there now, there isn't.
Oh, yeah, some sections, it's road.
Sidewalk building, yep, so it's making improvements without buying out businesses and buying or right of way. We're doing with what we, what we can with what we got.
It's going to be huge improvement.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone? Sarah, go ahead.
Will the speed be the same as sixth? So like, I mean, I think wasn't the intent, it's kind of, it's really to make six be that. More fluid street, and this is more like you're going into the uptown. Area or not, but will there be a speed difference form between the two?
I will have to look, I believe it's thirty-five mile an hour is the design speed, and typically you sign it for less than that, but I would have to confirm.
I appreciate the work on it, because I'm having flashbacks to our Blue Zones Project days with the road diet conversation as we were talking about that. But there was a lot of use of that, actually that section of road of looking. Of how in a healthier community, how much better that road could look with those exact type of improvements, four to three. More grass, burying the lines, and what that does for a community, so thank you.
And there is a possibility that we would apply for T SIP funding just to add on to this project, and so that has a maximum value of half a million dollars. But again, any money that we can go after, and because it's a road diet, it is considered a safety improvement, so. So we would just have to see what they would get, but since it's not till fiscal year twenty-five, we're proceeding with what we got, and.
Is trees a part of this?
We'll have to see what the right of way is, again, if there's not enough space, I don't want to set us up for failure. So when we get to that, you guys will get to see all that, but again, we're very early, we have to do the environmental, the right of way, there's a lot of steps to happen yet.
But we're not, we're not building it this year.
No, this is fiscal year twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yes, so we're very early in the process.
We won't be talking about it at next year's State of the City.
No.
See, I'm, I'm thinking ahead.
Something on your mind, Nick?
I can give you the environmental report if you want to read that.
Okay, go ahead, maybe, maybe this was the essence of Sarah's question. But going from four lane to three lane. As you, as you're designing this, will that naturally? Force traffic or bias the traffic to start using sixth, AKA the Barcalow Boulevard?
That won't necessarily, I mean. That won't necessarily, I mean, independent of whether Sixth Avenue is there or not. If you think about four lanes versus three lanes, the four lane essentially acts as three lane. So if you're in the left lane of whatever direction you're going and you're waiting to turn, that's essentially then a three lane road. So. That's why we call it a road diet and why it's a safety improvement, because you're basically stopping those rear end collisions that are happening, and you're moving them into that. Turn lane that they know is a turn lane. So independent of how it's being used, it's just a safety improvement by going from four to three. And so that's just something that is taught now to, to actually build in odd numbers, so five lane versus. Six lanes, it's just that way you have that center turn.
Thanks. Okay. Anything else? Okay, next one?
So the next one, again, so not only is enforcement part of our thing or making. Physical improvements, but also looking at the timing of signals. So over time, traffic patterns change, and so with that, the timings of how those signals operate. Need to be looked at and retimed. So this is a project to go out there and look at all our signals that are out there and actually. Have an engineering firm look at them and retime them so that they're functioning more efficiently. So that we're not having people sitting at a red light when they don't need to be sitting at a red light.
I was thinking about that yesterday. So, very timely.
And again, looking at yellow times for safety, there's all kinds of aspects that go in there. There's pedestrian leading intervals, if we have a lot of pedestrian crossing, maybe it stays red. To give the pedestrians time to get started across the crosswalk before you give somebody a, a turn. So there's all kinds of things that get looked at when you do that on the timing, so. We'll hire a professional traffic engineer to do that. What's that?
Focus group here, we can provide some input. Okay, any questions on that? I think that'll be well received by the public too. I, I occasionally get comments from people saying, you know, we need to look at the timing. Of the traffic signals. Okay, F one, I'm sorry, is that right? Yeah. Any, any questions on that? All right, the next page. Are there any questions? I'll have the mayor pro temp handle those. Okay. I know E four is marked, but there's any other questions?
Prior, prior to E four, any questions or comments? Okay, E four, Mike, that's yours.
All right, so E four, again, we talked about the flood plain permit, same area. So this is improvements to Winslow Road, the old Winslow Road, so the north south existing road. So with that, the developer is going to put curb and gutter on the west side. And then an HMA overlay on the, the main portion of the road. A portion of that, however, that red box that you see. Is not improved, so we have city property on both sides of that, and so. Rather than leave that small section of unimproved road where we improved it for Tower Terrace to the north, and they're improving it to the south. Rather than leave that small section, this agreement will have the developer go ahead and do the same thing to that section at the same time. And the city will reimburse. Same thing with, there's a sidewalk on the west side that goes from Tower Terrace to the edge of their property, that's the purple line. Paying for them to go ahead and put that gap in, rather than leave a gap. And make that connection, and then there's the water main, which is on the north side of Tower Terrace and connecting it to their. Item as well, and then the water department will reimburse them, so it's a contract to pay for all that while they're doing the work. So. Spilling some gaps.
So a question I have about that is. That, so that there will be new sidewalk along the west side of that segment of Winslow Road. It constructed as you have described. But going south from that point in front of the care center and on down towards Indian Creek School, we still have. Essentially Indian Creek Road that does or does not have sidewalk on the west side.
It does not, I believe there's a, a possibility they were going to do some improvements to the resident. And then in that case, we were going to force them to put the sidewalk in, so that would start to fill some of that gap in there.
Okay, yeah, there, there's still, if they do do the project to the south of the senior facility, there'll still be a gap. With a horse. Farm barn is at, it's an Indian Creek as well, so we'd have to eventually, or we might be like cross, because there might be a. Oh, there's no sidewalk there on the east side either, we've, we, we had to move some money around back in the day to. We didn't put sidewalk in our improvements, so. It's a big gap we'll have to look at and maybe try to find some dollars in the future to. Complete, especially at the elementary right there.
Yeah, so the younger, the younger families in the area bent my ear a couple of times just about. The fact that there isn't sidewalk that ultimately gets, gets from their location. And maybe even this new development all the way down to the school. So. Anything else on that? Okay. So that moves us then into the regular agenda. Anything up to, up to and through E five that anybody has a question about? I'm sorry, I got off the page there. Yeah, don't go backwards. Okay, regular agenda, anything prior to B one? Good, Ryan, it's on to you.
Thank you, sir. And so on Thursday, we'll have a public hearing regarding the general construction. And building concrete trade packages for the new public service facility, so if you recall, we had these packages come. Here in December of last year, we went back, value engineered these packages. And so on the general construction trade package, we had a project estimate established at two million seven hundred sixty thousand dollars. We just opened bids a few hours ago. Porch and Construction was a low bid at two million six hundred thirty nine thousand dollars, and so staff will be recommending awards to Porch and Construction. For Thursday. And then on the building concrete trade package, we had a project estimate at two million one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Rex Concrete was a low bid at two million two hundred eighty thousand, three hundred eighty seven dollars, that is. Slightly above the project estimate, however, I want to point out that that includes a couple of alternates that we did include. In this bid amount, so that includes a water, a waterproofer just in the wash bay, and also recess hoist. As well, so we're going to look at this, but regardless, we're probably going to still recommend awarding that. Project to Rex Concrete. So, any questions?
So this, this is reflective of some of the value reengineering that you've all done?
Yeah, so these packages alone were about three million less than where we were. Just in these two packages. And so we're, we're pretty happy with how we came out here, so. I will add one thing, probably in April, we'll be coming back to the city council with the remaining of, of our value engineering, so. We'll have quite a few change orders coming to council to provide credit against the project, and so our value engineering didn't stop here. It's going to keep going on into the project until this.
Yeah. Hey, other questions?
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, then E one or E two? Questions on those? Otherwise, E three, Mike?
Back again, all right, so for E three. This is an area west of the roundabout that we built at Echo Hill and Albernate Road. If you actually come from C Avenue eastbound into Marion, there's actually no speed limit sign out there. So we're not sure what the speeds people are actually driving, but when we did the roundabout design, we had our consultant look at it to determine what that speed limit should be. More and more development is occurring out there in that area, so. Right now, what we're recommending is set the speed limit at forty five. In the future, as more development occurs out there, and then there's some area that will be annexed into Cedar Rapids and we'll work with them. Likely it'll be taken down to thirty five, like it is east of Albernate Road, or at least. For now, we want to get some speed up there because there's no regulation right now. So this will have the first reading then, this week. Is our recommendation.
Questions, concerns about that? Okay. Can I bring us to the end of the meeting? And there's no closed session? Okay, well, thank you, everybody, and we'll hopefully see you all tomorrow.